Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Once again, everyone, how are you doing today? Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah. We are almost literally at the threshold of Ramadan. According to one scholar, he said something so beautiful. He said that we are in the changing rooms of Ramadan. Literally, that's how it is. Just a few days to go and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us this opportunity to sit together and actually figure out what we need to do in these next few days. Alhamdulillah. So without further ado, let's begin. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, Robbil 'Alameen. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala rasuluhil mustafa. Wassalatu wa assalamu ala rasuluhil mustafa 'Alameen. Wa alihi wa shahbihi wa manit tabahum bi ihfani ilaiyomuddin. Inna alhamdulillah, nahmaduhu wa nastaginuhu wa nastaghfiruhu. Wa na'udzubillahi min shuroori anfosina. Wa min seyyati amalina. Man yahthi illahu falaa mubillalah. Wa man yublil falaa hadiyalah. Wa nashadu alla ilaha illa allahu. Wahdahula shariqalah. Wa nashadu anna Muhammadan abduhu wa rasuluhu. Amma ba'ad. Robbich ra'hi shaddri, wa yasir li amri. Wa ahnul akhtata min lisanii. Yafqahu qawli. Amin ya Robbil 'Alameen. Ya ghafuru rahim, ya rahmara rahmiin. Yazal jalali wa likram. Fa'a'udzubillahi min shaytaani regime. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. So like I said, we are in the changing rooms of Ramadan. Just a few days to go before, Insha Allah, Insha Allah, with Allah's mercy, we take the plunge. So what is this? This month of Ramadan? What is this? Our state of our minds and the state of our hearts before we reach Ramadan and during Ramadan? I don't know about you guys, but I can say this about myself. That having spent so many Ramadans, alhamdulillah, with the mercy of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, it means still kind of a little unprepared, just like that little child getting ready for the first day of school after the summer holidays. You know, it puts together the pencils and the stickers and, you know, the notebooks and what have you in the bag. And it keeps on happening. Imagine now it's time to go to college and he tells his mom that he still has unprepared and wants help in putting together his backpack when he was a little kid. So aren't we in a kind of a similar condition, kind of thing? So really, there are only two ways to prepare for Ramadan. If you're standing on the edge of the shore, it is up to you and me to either be just swept away or to measure and analyze the wave. So most of us do approach Ramadan with mixed feelings. Yani, we know that how eagerly the companions used to wait for Ramadan. And sometimes, don't you feel a little guilty that really was I waiting so eagerly for the past few months or not? Is that the case with me? Don't know, don't know. You know, you then stress this pre-Ramadan anxiety. And alhamdulillah, hopefully, you've got all the physical preparations done. Samosas in the freezer, yeah, menu planned out, each shopping done, all of that, hopefully, let's see. But what about the real deal? What about what is going on in the heart? What about what is happening spiritually inside of us? For that, we need to understand first of all that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has said in Surah Ash'ara. Yau malayun fa'umalu wa labanu. Illa man atallah. Bi'yunus Salim. A day Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is talking about, which day? The day of judgment. A day in which neither wealth nor children will be of any benefit. Except one who comes to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala with something which Allah describes as Pal Bin Salim. A sound heart, right? A solid sound heart. A heart beating the way it was beating when Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala created it. That is the essence of being a believer. Going to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala with a sound heart. And you know this heart, this bill that we say in Urdu, this alb that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala talks about in the Quran a lot, yeah? This is something which all different cultures and all different religious spiritual traditions talk about a lot. It is the seat. Our physical heart is the seat of the spiritual heart. And even in terms of medical science, we have now found out that actually the heart has its own intelligence, the physical heart. It's not just under the control of the brain. And we also know, scientists have told us that now, that you know, when a baby, the heart starts beating even before the brain is developed. So it has its own kind of intelligence and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala talks about that a lot in the Quran. Like Allah says, right, that they have hearts, but they do not understand. And Allah says that I have placed a covering over their hearts. So then they may hear something, but they don't understand. And there is an akhina on their ears, a covering or a curtain on their ears as well because they don't see with their hearts. So this organ, whether you call it, look at it medically or whether you look at it spiritually, has its own identity. And when we go to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Insha Allah, which we have to actually, we have to go to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. The purpose is to go with a pure and clear and clean and a heart that is beating for Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala alone. In terms of Ramadan. Let's have a look at what Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is saying about fasting and how we are going to be connecting this to our state of the heart. Why has Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala singled out fasting? Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has told us, yeah, this is a Hadith Qudsi. That Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, Yaqoolu allahu azza wa jal. Asha muli. Yani fasting is mine. And it is I who will give reward for it. A person gives up his shahwat, his sexual passions, his food and his drink for my sake. Fasting is like a shield. And he who fasts has two joys. A joy when he breaks his fast and a joy when he will meet his lord. The change in the breath of the mouth of him who fasts is better in Allah's estimation than the smell of musk. Keep that in mind. And then now look at the spiritual exercise of fasting, the purpose and benefit. And Insha Allah, we will tie it in together with the state of our heart. There's this passage in the Quran, in Surah Baqarah, which is amazing, where Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala talks about fasting. Ayah number 183. Ya ayyuhal ladzina amnu. Kutiwa alaikumussiyaamu kama kutiba ala ladzina meyho publikum. La'allakum tattaqoon. I've highlighted the last words of each of these ayat and I want you to focus on that. And those of you who take notes, please write them down. Who you who believe? When Allah says, ya ayyuhal ladzina amnu, who is he talking to? He's talking to me. He's talking to you. Take it very, very personally. Kutiwa alaikumussiyaamu. Fasting is prescribed for you just as it was written down for those before you. La'allakum tattaqoon. So that perhaps you will have Taqwa. Perhaps you will become mindful of Allah. Ayah 183. Moving on, ayah 184. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is now talking about that there are prescribed number of days. Ayyaman ma'adu dat. Thirty days, the month of Ramadan. Whoever is ill or on a journey, let them fast an equal number of days afterwards. For those who can only fast with extreme difficulty, compensation can be made by feeding a needy person. But whoever volunteers to give more, it is better for them. And to fast is better for you if only you knew, right? Wa an ta'sumu khairulakum il kunzu ta'alamon. Focus on ta'alamon. Ayah 185. Kahru Ramadanalladzi unzila fihi al-qur'an. Hudaan, khudan lil nas wabayinatim min al-huda wal furaan. And Allah goes on to say, Ramadan is the month in which the Quran was revealed as a guide for humanity with clear proofs and guidance and a furaan, yani a standard of right and wrong. So whoever is present in this month, let them fast. But whoever is ill or on a journey, let them fast an equal number of days afterwards. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala intends ease for you, not hardship. Wa la yuridu bikum al-'usr. Wa li tukmilul qiddata wa li tukbirullah ala ma hadakum. Wa la'allakum tashqaroon. Allah intends ease for you, not hardship. So that you may complete the prescribed period and proclaim the greatness of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala for rightly guiding you. And perhaps you will be grateful. Tashqaroon. I'm not going into the Tafsir of these ayats at all. Look at what Allah is saying about the month of Ramadan and about fasting and what benefit are you going to get from it? Then ayah number 186, sandwiched between these ayat, calling upon Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Wa idha salaq, sa'alaka ibadi anni fa inni qarib. Ujibu dawwata dha'i idha dhaan. Fa li astajibu li wal yu'minu bi la'allahum yarshudun. When my beloved slave asks me about, asks you about me, oh my beloved Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, tell them, inni qarib, I'm very near. I hear and answer the call of the caller whenever he calls me. Let them listen to my call and believe in me. Perhaps they will be rightly guarded. Yarshudun. Then ayah 187, again, some of these ayat are very spiritual and some of these ayat are talking about the fath, the dos and dons of fasting, which is a very, very important aspect as well, aspect as well. Ayah 187, Allah is saying, it has been made lawful for you to go to your wives during the night of the fast. These are your garments and you are theirs. Allah knows that you used to betray yourselves and He's merciful and pardoned you. So now you may associate intimately with your wives and benefit from the enjoyment that Allah has made lawful for you. And eat and drink at night until you can discern the wife's streak of dawn against the blackness of the night. Then complete your fasting until night sets in. But do not associate intimately with your wives during the period where you are on retreat in the mosques, yani thakaf. These are the bounds set by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Tilka khududu allah. Falaa taqrabuha kazaalika yubayynu allahu ayati lil nas. La'allahum yattaqoon. Thus Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala makes its signs clear to mankind that they must stay away from evil. La'allahum yattaqoon. Yani the fikh of fasting has been given here. The month of Ramadan has been mentioned and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has mentioned four different things over here, five actually. La'allakum tattaqoon. Il kunzu ta'alamon. La'allahum yarshudun. And then again, it is sandwiched with, la'allahum yattaqoon. What does it mean? How do we analyze these ayats? What scholars tell us is that these are the ingredients for living the best life, even in this dunya. Even in this dunya, we're not talking about only the akhira. Taqwa, the consciousness of God, right? Knowledge, shukr, right guidance, and then taqwa again. The knowledge and the consciousness of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Essence of taqwa is what? Our relationship with God to be of the highest level. We completely recognize that there is a lord above us. And that eliminates a lot of confusion from our hearts. A lot of stuff is clarified because you are giving yourself up to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. That is taqwa, the essence of that. Then Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala says, are those who know equal to those who do not know? I'm such a logical thing, yeah? Because when Allah is saying, il kunzu ta'alamon, it's about knowledge. So not only do we need to know the spiritual benefits of fasting and of this month of Ramadan, but we need to know how to go about it. I mean, we need to know. I mean, it's quite possible that some of us don't know how to fast. What are, what is the fath of fasting? So go over and revise a book of, yeah, of a book of fasting. What are you supposed to do? When does the fast start? If you have your period, what should you do? You know, all of that, we should know that. Are those who know equal to those who do not know? And much wider meaning, without knowledge, you can't even have the taqwa of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, right? Without knowledge and vice versa. And then shukr. Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam used to stand so long in his night prayer that his feet would get swollen. And Bibi Ayesha says that she would ask that, Ya Rasulullah, all your sins are forgiven. Why do you do so much effort? Yeah, why do you put yourself through so much? And Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, he said, Afala pakunu abadan shakuro. Should I not be a grateful servant of God? This shukr is the key to the consciousness of God. And this shukr is a direct result of a consciousness of God. Now you might be thinking that, okay, let's talk about right guidance first, okay? Right guidance, yeah? Ability to make correct choices every day. In a nutshell, that is what guidance is. You see, sometimes you feel that these terms, ta'taqoon, ta'alamon, tashqaroon, yarshudun, again, yattaqoon, they're very abstract. What does it mean? They're not abstract at all. The spirituality that we find in the Sunnah and the spirituality that we find in the Quran is very tangible. It's not looking at the sun and saying that I'm getting connected to God. No, right? It is not pretentious taqwa. It is not delusional taqwa. No, it is very practical taqwa. It is very practical knowledge. It is very practical shukr and practical guidance. Now, one question that might come to your mind is that we fast all day, that requires sabr. So why isn't sabr mentioned over here? Why isn't sabr mentioned over here? Simple reason. What Rasulullah says is that shukr and sabr are like the two sides of the same coin. Without shukr, you're not going to have sabr, yeah, and vice versa. So Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala in these ayat has mentioned shukr, so which implies that you have this sabr as well, right? So very, very interesting thought is how the sequence of these ayat are and what we learn from them. That we are getting a whole blueprint of living the best life practically in this dunya. Living the best life practically in this dunya. And also now understand, where are all these ingredients located? Let's look at the ingredients again, taqwa, il, shukr, rushd, where are they located? Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam once said that taqwa ha-huna, this is a long Hadith, and we'll be just focusing on this part. Taqwa is right here and he pointed towards his chest three times. Taqwa is in the spiritual heart. That is how all of this is connected with the spring cleaning of our heart, right? That is how it is connected. Just give me one minute. Right? So this month, which the benefit of it are all of these things is actually related to our condition of our heart. So before we embark on it, just a few days to go, the first thing that we need to do is examine our hearts. The first thing that we need to do before anything else. Yeah, all the samosas and pakoras and all of that, fine, okay. But the condition of our heart is going to tell us how we are going to enter this month and how we're going to get out of it, Insha Allah. Insha Allah, Insha Allah, Insha Allah, right? Do you feel like kind of weighed down sometimes? That we are carrying too much weight? Not just around our midriffs or hips, by the way. So much going on in our lives, so much. If all of us sitting over here, just make a list of what we do all day long, what's going on in our lives, multiple stuff is going on. Too many plates to spin, too many engagements to keep. And it's pretty tough for those who want to keep a spiritual mindfulness and focus, very hard. So this month of Ramadan, with Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala's mercy, many of these distractions are taken away. So, so to speak, our desk is clear of endless tea and coffee months. I don't know about you guys, but I'm like, I've got this endless stream of tea and green tea coming when I'm sitting at my desk. So it's quite a zen time, really. But we find ourselves weighed down by too many distractions. And this is a useful time of the year to take stock, to clean out the attic, to engage in spring cleaning, so to speak. Junaid Baghdadi, he said something very profound. Al mu'minu yataqalabu fi arba'ina halaf fi yau fi yau me wa'hid. The state of the heart of a moment changes forty times in a day. Don't you feel that? If you pray five times a day, is the quality of your salah exactly the same every time? Or even each raka, the quality is very different. That's just one example. In the same day, your mood is up and your mood is down and you are feeling low and you're feeling high and all of the spectrum in between. That is a fact. Al mu'minu yataqalabu fi arba'ina halaf fi yau me wa'hid. Wal kafiru yabga ala halam wa'hidatin li arba'ina sana. And the disbeliever will stay in the same state for forty years, comatose. Nothing penetrates, nothing happens. Akhina covering on the heart, right? A heart that is alive, a qalb that is beating is going to change, is going to go up and down. That is the default situation. That is the default situation. All of this weight that we are carrying. Ramadan and a few days even before Ramadan, this is the time for something which is called Tajrid in the Arabic language. It's a, it's a beautiful concept, Tajrid. What does it mean? It means, um, many, many different meanings. One is kind of revealing something. One is to singling out something specifically. But the inbuilt meaning of Tajrid, because we relate it to our spring cleaning effort, taking off and out of garment or covering to reveal what lies beneath. Yani, take away anything additional to expose the most essential element. Tremendous sense of lightning of the heart, right? Those of you, those of us who get waxing done, which I hope all of us do, right? At least once a month, don't you feel this tremendous sense of lightning of the body? When all the unwanted hair is gone. It's physically, you feel that sense of relief, that sense of being light, yeah? When our cupboards or our fridge or our freezer or whatever, it's stuffed with things randomly, something is rotting away, something is like ten years old or whatever. And then you clean it out one day. One day you get this premonition, okay, I'm going to sit down and clean today. At the end of the day, you may be physically tired, but you are very mentally at ease, almost. Light, feeling of lightness, that is going Tajrid. We are not carrying so much. There is this proverb in Arabic, right? And imagine this stripping away emotionally in front of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, figuring out who you really are, that is really Tajrid. It is different from Taskeer, right? Taskeer is cleansing of the heart. Tajrid is taking all of the covers out. Taskeer begins after Tajrid. Tajrid is figuring yourself out first. Who am I? Who, what is my essence? Who am I? That sometimes, you know, as children, you remember, I remember going home, going to school after the summer vacations and a lot of times the first essay that you were asked to write was what happened in your summer holidays? Or the first day of school, you're, you're asked to write, tell us about yourself. Right? Tell us about yourself. Today, all of us should do this exercise. Write your name or just write me. We love to say like me, 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 me. And then write all of the different things that you can think of about your own self. Who are you? Single it out because Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is going to, has said in Surah Ka', for example, Wa auridu ala robbika shafa. Indeed, you have come to us the way you were created in the first instance. Wa auridu ala robbika shafa. In that same state that you were created, completely naked, completely transparent before Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Because we put on so much of weight, we put on so much of garments. We put on so much of pretense in this dunya, on ourselves, on our hearts, on our bodies, that we even start believing it ourselves. That is what is delusion, isn't it? That you start believing that this is who I am, although you're not that at all. So Ramadan is this beautiful time. It's this very conducive time to figure yourself out. And particularly the earlier we do that, the better it is, Insha Allah, Insha Allah. Because after we go through the process of Tajrid, taking off all of the, just like, you know, spring cleaning. That's why the perfect word for it is spring cleaning. In Pakistan at least, in Karachi actually, winter is gone and I'm sure a lot of us have packed away our winter clothes. In many places, it's still very cold and it's snowing and all that. And we've got all of those layers on. When we have all of those layers on, that's not who we really are. Once we start taking all of the layers off, one after the other, one after the other, one after the other, then the truth of us is revealed. The truth of us is revealed, that core is exposed. And once we expose that core to ourselves and admit it in front of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Ya Rabb, I am in a state of mess, man. I didn't realize that. I didn't realize where I'm going. I didn't realize this is who I actually am. It's not Shaitan, Shaitan's a lot of that in Ramadan. And then you wonder, why am I still watching rubbish? Why am I still watching all these morning shows? And by the way, have you noticed then in Ramadan, we have all these Ramadan specials happening everywhere? Not necessarily religious, yeah, not necessarily religious, all kinds of TV shows, all that kind of stuff, specifically related to the month of Ramadan. And you realize, what am I doing? Why am I wasting this time? Because you realize what your core is all about. There's this Arab proverb, those who travel light reach the destination more easily. Makes sense? Even physically, those of you who travel, whenever you travel light, you visit through the customs or whatever and you are in the, you know, fast track line, etc., the more luggage you have, the more problematic it is. Similarly, the more weight we have on our hearts, the harder it is to reach the destination of Taqwa. La'allakum tattaqoon. Don't forget that. La'allakum tattaqoon. Kutiba alaikumussiyaamu. Tamakutiba ala ladzina meyho publikum. La'allakum tattaqoon. Write it down. Put it on somewhere, on a piece of paper, where you can see it every day. Travel light. Let's lighten our loads right now, from this moment, yeah, Insha Allah. And pray to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, take us into Ramadan. What are these weights that we need to chuck out? I've made a list, right? And I'm sure it's not a complete or exhaustive list at all, but it is something to begin with. Something that we all can think about, Insha Allah. And then we can add to it, Insha Allah, according to our own personal weight capacity and to see what are the own personal challenges as well. Unhealthy obsessions. Allahu Akbar. I mean, we could have a whole big list of that, unhealthy obsessions. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has actually summed up our lives, our material dunya today, as it is, right? Alhaqumutta kasur. Rivalry in worldly increase has distracted you. Two words, alhaqumutta kasur sums up our lives today. These unhealthy obsessions. Just can't get enough. We just can't get enough. We are just never happy with what we have. Whether it is our nose, whether it is our waistline, whether it is our car, whether it is which family I was born in, so and so's mom is such a cool mom and my mom is like devil incarnate, yeah? So and so went to that university, that is why they have all the doors open. Poor me, right? Unhealthy obsessions with stuff. Unhealthy obsessions with things and with things included is what? Likes, right? Comments on, on, on social media. Followers on Instagram. That's all unhealthy obsession. Alhaqumutta kasur. It weighs us down. It is making our heart heavy. It is making the ship of our hearts sink before it even gets a chance to swim. We get distracted by this worldly increase from the things that really make us happy. Right? Ala bivikrillahi to tumain al-kulub. Indeed, it is the vikr of Allah which gives itzmainan to the hearts. Indeed, it is our family and our friends and actually, number one, our faiths that makes us truly happy. When everything is stripped away, we realize what's really important. You know, it's not going to be the head of your HR who will be sitting at your deathbed. It's going to be your nearest and dearest and Insha Allah, Insha Allah, the angels of mercy sent by Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So forget about the unhealthy, chuck them out. Let's chuck them out. Grudges. Allah, another big one, another very heavy one, grudges. They're pulling us down. We remember what our mother-in-law said first the day we got married. And we've been married like thirty years. Allahu Akbar. What is the matter with us? We hold on to grudges for dear life. They say in psychology, put that glass down. Because the longer you hold the glass, your arm is going to hurt. It's not going to matter to anybody else except you. Grudges about everything, so and so said this to me, so and so said that, I wasn't invited to this party. You know, oh my gosh, she doesn't care. You know, oh my gosh, she doesn't care about me, Janu doesn't love me, the list goes on and on. Grudges against everything, against everybody. You know, there was this one Sahabi, yeah, who was passing by the masjid of our beloved Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam and Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, if you want to look at a person of Jannah, there he goes. Now this other Sahabi, because these guys were like really, uh they had healthy obsessions, they had the obsession for reaching Jannah. They had the obsession of being deserving for the mercy of Allah, that is a healthy obsession. They had the obsession of following the Sunnah, these are very healthy obsession. So this guy, this, this other Sahabi, Rodhila Wa Ta'ala, and he said, okay, I'm going to find out what is it that this guy does? This particular person does, Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has given him such glad tidings of Jannah. So he goes and he says, I want to spend some time with you. So he spends, the other one was obviously hospitable, he said, sure, sure thing. So he spends some time with him and then he realizes, hmm. It's not like, you know, they, both of them were praying, both of them were doing good deeds, getting up for Tahajjud, everything, he said, what is it that he? I mean, he doesn't do anything that special, you know, he didn't find anything so unusual about his behavior or about his day or about his routine that Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam would say such a huge thing about it. So he eventually asked, I said, bye, this is the reason I'm here, so can you please tell me what it is? Now, this guy also started thinking, because they were like truly humble, they had true humility. And he said, hmm, I'm not quite sure, but it's one thing, before I go to bed, my heart is absolutely clean of any grudge for anybody. I, I, I hold no grudges at all, before I go to sleep, I'm like a clean slate in my heart. اللَّهُ أَكْبَر Can you imagine basharat of Jannah for that? And it's difficult to do, if, it, it is only anything to do. Why? Because emotional hurt, right? Toxic relationships, these are the reality of our lives. This is reality, it happens, people hurt us and the people who are nearest to us sometimes hurt us the most. And it is hard to let go, it is hard to forgive, it is hard to move on, it's very hard, it's very hard, right? Because please understand, just like you have a whole list of bad guys in your story, perhaps you're on the list of somebody else's story that you are a bad guy, you're the villain. We should, we should consider that also, grudges are a weight, best just chucked out of the boat. Just best chucked out, walk on it, find out how to work on it. Hmm, get inspiration from the Sahaba, get inspiration from the Prophet Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, how did they do it? Yeah, find out about it, but we need to get rid of this extra weight. Need for validation from others. This is getting increasingly problematic and increasingly very, very heavy. This need, innate desire for people to feel recognized and accepted and valued by others. We need to get rid of that, we need to really get rid of that. What we should be worrying about, the healthy obsession, how is Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala looking at me? What do I look like to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala? Not by others and sometimes this need for validation makes us do very stupid things and very sinful things. And we get involved in activities that does not become a believer at all. Lying and, you know, cheating just for validation, just for validation, cheating in an exam so that you get an A star. What is that? This need for validation is ruining our hearts, we need to move on from there, Insha Allah, Insha Allah. Pretense, pretense, everybody is pretending to be what they are not. And actually, Shaytaan has given us such an amazing tool, social media, to project yourself as something. Are you really that? Yeah, now with all of these filters that you put on your photographs, even somebody was saying, please be careful in case you get kidnapped, dana kare, yeah, people will not, the police will not be able to find you because they won't recognize you because that's not what you look like. Yeah, this pretense constantly, constantly, you know something? Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has talked about pretense in the Quran. For example, in Surah An'am, in ayah number hundred and twelve, look it up, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is saying, so we have need for every prophet enemies, devilish humans and djinn whispering to one another with elegant words of deception. And the Arabic term that Allah has used is زُخْرُفَ الْعَوْلِ غُرُورًا زُخْرُف Yani gold-plated, something which is pretending to be something else. So these days we see زُخْرُف and pretense in everything, in how people speak, in what is posted on the media, in how people look, right? In advertising, everywhere there's pretense and we have become pretentious fools. We need to get rid of that, we need to get it out of our boat. Perfectionism, that's another heavy one actually. Perfectionism, we do not understand the difference between excellence and perfection. Excellence is to do something to the best of your ability, to the highest standard, perfectionism is driving yourself insane. Only Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is perfect, only Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam in terms of a human being is perfect. None, nobody else is perfect, nobody else can achieve perfection. And if we are after that, then we are going for that plastic surgery, then we are going for that botox, then we are going for the hair implant. I, I'm talking about physically like the, you know, perfectionism, let go of it. It's a stupid way to carry, hmm, an illusion of control. I am in control, I do this, I have cleaned the house, I have made the samosas, yeah, I have done this for my children, I do this for everybody. You're not in control, let it go, let it go, leave it to Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. The minute we come to that point that I give myself up to Allah, إِنَّ لِلَّهِ وَإِنَّ إِلَيْهِ رَجُوعٌ I belong to Allah and to Him is my return, that is letting go of the control. That is letting go of the control, yeah? That is a huge weight which doesn't let us go forward. Because even when I take control of my own self, my own children, my own family, my own home, I'm weighing myself down. And that doesn't mean that in Ramadan, you're going to say, oh my God, I have left all, all control, you know? I don't have any unhealthy obsession for papas, so all of you are just going to have dahi and roti from today. No, that, that's not what it means, that's not what it means that you shouldn't have a good aftar, that you shouldn't be, um, making stuff. I'm just talking about material things because this is very tangible examples, right? That doesn't mean that, but illusion of control, that my life I control, you don't. This is, these are the weights which we carry without even realizing how heavy they are and how they're holding us back. It's like having shackles on our feet, yeah? And you know what? The Dua for Laylatul Fadzir, this, this, the mercy of this month. اللَّهُمَّ إِنَّكَ أَفْوُونَ تُحِبُّ الْأَفْوَاءُ فَأَعْفُو أَنْ نِي Oh Allah, you are forgiving and you love forgiveness, so forgive me, this is the dua to set ourselves free. Because one of the meanings of af, yani this af is to release, to set free, to turn away from punishing. Hmm, to heal, to remove all traces of all of this weight that we were carrying. Yeah, so that's why, that is why Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam has told us, make this dua. Particularly during the last nights of Ramadan, but start from the first night, start from, uh, uh, the daytime as well. اللَّهُمَّ إِنَّكَ أَفْوُونَ تُحِبُّ الْأَفْوَاءُ فَأَعْفُو أَنْ نِي Because it sets us free from all of the burdens and all of the weights we have deliberately put inside of our hearts. So may Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala give us the Taufeeq to get rid of all of those burdens, Insha Allah Ta'ala, and clean ourselves out and make room for Taqwa and make room for Shukr and make room for rightly, being rightly guided and make room for knowledge. All of that is in the heart if we make room for it, right? And it is also a month of intense activity, this is something which we sometimes forget, sometimes forget. You cleanse your heart and you feel, you know, you have this, um, concept that anybody who's doing some kind of spring cleaning of the heart has to be solitary, has to sit in a corner, has to just do Allah, 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 Allah or whatever, right? Or go around circles and circles and circles getting dizzy, yeah? You don't see that, you don't see that in the construction of the life of Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, it is not a state of semi-hibernation. It is not that, right? It is unnatural to be dull-witted and lazy and often become cranky because of inactivity. If you look at the life of, at the life of Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam and righteous believers even after that, Ramadan is actually a time of increased activity. Because for a believer, they have lightened the loads of the heart, right? And lightened the burdens of constant eating and drinking, so there is more willingness and more energies to strive and struggle for the sake of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Uh, Battle of Badr happened in Ramadan, Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam approximately, I think, Ramadan he had after he migrated, right? And each and every Ramadan was full of activity, Fatimakka, eight Hijri. You look at Tarek Bin Ziyad, do you guys know Tarek Bin Ziyad, the conqueror of Spain, Ramadan ninety-two Hijri. Salahuddin Ayub, Ramadan five hundred and eighty-two Hijri. Uh Muslims who defeated the Mongol invasion, Ramadan twelve sixty-one, they, a battle of Ain Jalut. How did these guys do it? Where did they get the energy to do it? Once our heart is unloaded from all of this rubbish and all of these weights, then the energy of Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, so to speak, comes in there. Taqwa is energy, right? Knowledge is energy, hmm? Sabr and Shukr, energy, that's what it is and it is tangible. How do we translate this in, in our lives? Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, in the last ten days of Ramadan, any personal hyperactivity, personal increased activity in Ramadan, he used to pray all night and he used to keep his family awake for the prayers. That is what Bibi A'ishah Robbi Alaa Wa Ta'ala unha tells us, you know? Time of giving, time of getting involved in social development activities. وَيُطْعِمُونَ الطَّعَامَةَ عَلَى خُبْهِهِ مِسْكِينًا وَيَتِيمًا وَأَسِيرًا إِنَّمَا نُطْعِمُكُمْ لِوَضِهِ اللَّه لَا نُرِيدُ مِنْكُمْ وَجَزَاءً أَوْ لَا شُكُورًا The righteous are those who feed the poor and the orphan and the captive for the love of God. And another way that scholars translate is, is that they feed and, um, help out people, those less fortunate for the love of God or despite the love of the stuff that they are giving. And they say what? We feed you for the sake of God alone, we seek from you neither reward nor thanks. اللَّهُ أَكْبَر وَيُطْعِمُونَ الطَّعَامَةَ عَلَى خُبْهِهِ مِسْكِينًا وَيَتِيمًا وَأَسِيرًا إِنَّمَا نُطْعِمُكُمْ لِوَضِهِ اللَّه لَا نُرِيدُ مِنْكُمْ جَزَاءً أَوْ لَا شُكُورًا So if you are giving iftar to people, if you are being very generous in the month of Ramadan, which we should be, because Rasulullah Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam was more generous in the month of Ramadan than he was usually and usually also he was amazingly generous, yeah? And this is part of the cleanliness of the heart. Hmm, then don't think that you're doing anybody a favor. And don't think that you need to post all of that on social media, don't do that, that's cheap and ridiculous. That, that's very cheap and vulgar, don't be such a plebeian, right? Rise above those base instincts, yeah? I feed only for the sake of Allah, I give only for the sake of Allah. I don't want any jazza, I don't want any offense, I stick, you are such a philanthropic person, no, no, wala shukuroh. Don't want anything from you, not even thanks. Don't expect that the person who works in your house and you're giving them aftar every day, now they should stay longer. Or they should be, say, oh, thank you, Baji, thank you, Baji, no. Be thankful that Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala has given us the opportunity to be the givers, we could have been on the other end. Yeah, beautiful ayah and Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala talks about giving so much, particularly in the month of Ramadan. So it has always been your purpose, dear heart, to keep beating to the tune of your Lord. We have swerved, you and I, amidst deafening noise of being. Now, the calm sound of silence may give us a restart. I did hear you wailing, stop, stop in the name of God, apologies for the neglect. I was immersed in an imaginary part. Pretense, your sobbing turned into sighs, then you became my accomplice. When in Rome, huh? You flippant, sly old boy. After all our vain wanderings have left us but exhausted, He Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala is beckoning us back to His mercy. His light, out of this darkness, out of this dark, leave this jazz behind and return to the age-old melody, my dear heart, the melody of La Ilaha Illallah, Muhammad Rasulullah. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala facilitate us in spring cleaning our hearts. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala make it easy for us this Ramadan. May Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala take us into Ramadan with a light and a beautiful and a glowing heart beating for His sake alone. And may Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala take us out of Ramadan with increased Taqwa and increased knowledge and increased Hidayah and increased Shukr and increased Sabr. يا مُقَلِّبَ الْقُلُوبِ سَبِّتْ قَلْبِي عَلَى ذِينِك Oh Turner of Hearts, make firm our heart on your deen. ربنا لا تزغ قلوبنا بعد اذ هديتنا وهبلنا من لا دون رحمة إنك أنت الوحب ربنا لا تزغ قلوبنا, oh Allah, do not deviate our hearts. بعد اذ هديتنا, after you have given it the guidance, the Hidayah. وهبلنا من لا دون رحمة And gift us and grant us from yourself mercy. إنك أنت الوحب and you are the best Wahab, the best who gifts. Gift us your mercy and take us into this merciful month of Ramadan with light hearts, Insha Allah Ta'ala, and with hearts that bow down to you. سبحان ربي رب العز ب عما يسيكون والسلام على المرسلين والحمد لله رب العالمين اللهم ربنا جعلنا منهم الذين آمنوا وعملوا الصالحات وتواصوا بالحق وتواصوا بالشبر آمين يا رب العالمين يا غفور رحيم يا رحمة رحمين يا زلجلالي والسلام السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته. All of you have a wonderful, wonderful Ramadan, remember each and every one of us in your prayers. Remember those who are less fortunate and may Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala make us meet with clear and clean hearts, Insha Allah, Insha Allah, for your go and rock. Assalamualaikum.